All right, let's get started. Apologies for the delay in starting. We're transitioning from a meeting from upstairs and it takes a while for tech to kind of move down. It's just the physics. All right, this public regular meeting of the Board of Education for August 5th is called to order 2025. All items being considered this evening are being posted on the PPS website under the Board of Meetings tab. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28 replay through the next few weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. All right, good evening, welcome. Thank you all for being here, all eight of you. We ask that everyone here just be respectful to each other. It's a good rule to go by. If you brought signs, just be mindful of people behind you, keep aisles and walkways clear, don't trip. We are starting this evening with the superintendent's report, so Dr. Armstrong, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Oh, sorry, let me make sure that it is shared with... car to pull up. Might need someone else to share. Oh, there we go, I'm having some.
I'm sorry, I do have it, I just hadn't, I hadn't logged into the meeting yet, so I'm not ready to share it.
Okay.
Faster than I did, I'm sorry.
Well, it's okay, the pictures can catch up with us, or at least they'll be uploaded as a PDF onto the board website. Just a couple of things that I wanted to uplift. The Ida B. Wells, hopefully you all saw that news, the band director received $10,000 one through the Manlo Music Project. That was outstanding. So Project Community Care, there is a website, August 16th is the date, and if you're asking, what is Project Community Care, you may already know it, or if you don't, it's where our community comes together to beautify our schools in preparation for the return to students. And so if you are interested in participating, check with, check the website, and it should show then a list of schools where you can sign up and more information about that. Then, as you all know, leadership kicked off this week, and many, many of our teams, I appreciate those that are here. It's been a long day, as folks arrive, starting at 7:00 a.m., and tomorrow morning will be no different. And so I appreciate the team, and I look forward to, we have some new senior leaders who have joined our ranks, and I look forward to introducing them at our September Board Meeting. We want, we have some folks that are still transitioning and relocating in, and so we'll do the big introduction at the September Board Meeting. So I am looking forward to that moment, and I'm really excited that those of you who are RSVP'd will be at the launch tomorrow. I think it's a big moment. Last year, due to travel and conferences, I think I only had two board members in attendance, and so I think it's exciting to have the full squad. We have a handful of elected officials, we have a special guest arriving, so it's going to be a really fun moment, so I look forward to you all being there and leaning in with our building administrators and teacher leaders. And then lastly, just as you know, we are continuing to lift literacy by making sure that what we're doing is meaningful and that we're starting with our youngest learners. And so we have beautifully written books that our K- through 2 students read in class, and they get to take home a black and white copy. And so this is the Geodes, and it is directly aligned with Witten Wisdom. So I have a video that I'm going to show that will show you how we are lifting literacy through fun reading challenges.
Part of reading is about belonging, and this event shows that we all belong, and we all belong at baseball, we all belong part of the community with Dylan, and belonging is one of the best ways to raise up literacy. This baseball experience with Dylan can just help bring more energy to doing the hard work of decoding and comprehension of books. It's filling up the students with a love of knowing that the community is supporting their reading and supporting their learning, and it will have benefits for long term, which is that feeling they have.
So if you haven't danced with the pickle, I highly encourage you put that on your to-do list this year.
I actually have.
Oh, you have?
I have, with Dylan.
With Dylan, Dylan the Deal.
Twice.
Pickle. I love it, okay. Well, for other fun adventures and wonderful things that are happening across our district, please follow us on the socials, and as always, you'll hear me say, "Together we rise." Thank you.
Next up, we have student representative Rotorto. Do you have a report for us today?
Thank you, I don't really have much report, the school year hasn't really started yet, but I look forward to working with you guys this year.
Thank you. Next up, we have our general public comment. First, let's start off, do anyone sign up for a public comment today?
We do not.
That's a first. Okay, skip, skip. Union partners? Nope. Okay, we can do our, I know that committees haven't met yet, but I do think that Director LaForte, or Director Sullivan? Okay, we do have stuff, so great.
Okay, this is an audit committee report. As the Chair of the Audit Committee for the 25-26 school year, I want to report to you that I have met with our internal auditor to do some initial planning for the Audit Committee's work plan for this year. The other two members of the committee, Director Split and Director Engelsman, have also taken time to meet with the internal auditor. And I know that when you meet with the auditor, you learn a lot. She loves to teach. Since it is not always possible to know when reports to the committee will be ready for presentation, one of the issues the Audit Committee struggled with last year was related to scheduling the Audit Committee meetings on an as-needed basis. I plan to do the scheduling a little differently this year. I wanted to get our Audit Committee meetings on the calendar as soon as possible, but we also need to build in some flexibility. As a result, our Board Manager sent out monthly meetings to Audit Committee members for monthly Audit Committee meetings, although it is not the intent of the Audit Committee to meet every month. Last year, the Audit Committee had four meetings, and this year we plan to have five. As the year progresses, we will be deleting the meeting invites for meetings that are not necessary. Since our first Audit Committee meeting will be October 16th, we will get the meeting invite for August and September deleted. So I know that has been kind of confusing for Stephanie and Christie, but you'll get used to it. Hopefully, this plan will provide us the flexibility to get the five meetings scheduled as needed throughout the year. I'm really looking forward to the Audit Committee work this year with our new committee members. As we get closer to our first meeting, I'll give the Board a preview of the agenda through my committee reports to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sullivan, Chair of the Audit Committee.
Thank you. So the first meeting of the Policy Committee has been scheduled for the 25th of August, and we've gotten a request to move that, so if we could respectfully find another date that would work mutually for all of us. There are three of us on the committee, I'm chairing the committee, Director Chase and Director Engelsman are also on that committee. I've assembled a small list of items, and we will be having a meeting in which we discuss the items that we would all like to bring to the table in public, and so I look forward to that, and then I look forward to finding a date that that first meeting will work. It happens to be the day before school starts, so it's challenging, and that we should have more. We will plan to meet once a month at the Policy Committee, and so far, we have kind of a full, looks like a full work plan for the year.
I have a question I'm going to start with first, and then I have a report from the Bond Accountability Committee, to which I'm the liaison. The question is, once those work reports are developed, can they be shared around with the entire Board so that we can see them as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. And I would hope that, you know, if you have an issue that, you know, we could add as well.
Yeah. I do enough policy by day, but... So I am the new Board Liaison to the Bond Accountability Committee, which met, I think, on the 23rd, something like that. I was on an airplane, so I missed it, listened to it over the course of a few days this weekend and last night. And it was a really interesting meeting, and I feel like all of us would have enjoyed it. But I'll just share a few of the highlights and a few things that I especially want Virginia to keep in mind as the new Chair of the Facilities Committee. One thing for the Bond Accountability Committee is that they, just to remind everyone, just sort of in my own layman's terms of what it is, it's basically like a team of citizen experts on construction, project management, and some of the other elements of a bond that gather together and are there to provide advice and insight along the way to our staff and to the Board, and that sort of serve as like, like it says, accountability mechanism to not just have the Board have accountability, but to have citizen accountability, right? And so I use the word citizen loosely, and wish I would have picked a different term, but a public, public, public membership. So many members of the committee itself have been on it for quite some time and seem willing to serve and interested, but there was a discussion right at the top about perhaps adding some folks, there might be some folks who would leave if there were new folks, and they definitely need a new Chair. The current Chair is already done with her term as a Chair and really seems interested in moving on. So if people know somebody with that type of expertise, it sounds like talking to, oh, I can't think of Stormy's last name. Stormy Shanks is the staff for that, and so if you have somebody who'd be good, I know she's got some ideas, it sounds like, or they've done some recruitment and have some interested folks, but I'll just put it out into the ether that it looks like some new folks would be helpful. They went through the bond audit pretty extensively that we've talked about here at this table a bit, and that was presented to the Audit Committee. I know many of you have read that audit. If you want to, instead of reading it, get a presentation on it instead, there's a good one to listen to right there. And there was some conversation along the way about the bond, about the bond audit. One of the things that I just really took home more than anything was that they were concerned about so many new Board members, and even new Board members, even including like the two of you that have been here for two years, that they just didn't feel like people even kind of knew they existed or what their role or function was. And you could imagine serving on a public body, that doesn't feel very, like, good. So I know that they brought up that I would be serving as the liaison, and of course, I wasn't physically there, so that's not like the most helpful thing, but I didn't know the meeting was coming, and so I couldn't plan to be there and was on a plane. But I'll make sure that they know that we are really excited about and interested and invested in their work. I'm planning on emailing the Board, just emailing the group, kind of on behalf of all of us, to say how excited we are to reengage. But there was definitely like a solid 10 minutes kind of devoted to us not knowing what they do and them not having much communication with us, so we can, we can work to improve that in the future. And make sure that as our new Facilities Committee gets sort of put back together, they kept referring to the old acronym for it, like SFIAC or something, anyway, that we don't like impinge upon their role with the Facilities Committee and figure out how they can be like side by side and, and work well together, so that we have a place for board, not expert, right, input, and then their like expert input and figuring out how to put that together.
Can I say a word about that committee?
And I heard you were, I heard you used to go to them at some point, you were the liaison, yeah, they said nice things about you.
Yes, yes, and so the committee, we did a really intentional outreach to diversify that committee, it was all men, all with amazing experience from public agencies that had experience managing public construction projects. But we did a really intentional recruitment process that resulted in three women joining the Bond Accountability, several people under 40, and it was a really good, and some racial diversity as well. And I think that's always a good thing, not to minimize the input of the people that are amazing, and they have years of construction management with Trimet, and they know the scene, they know the, they know the realm, so I'm really glad that you're going to be serving with them and keeping them informed and kind of keeping that communication going both ways.
Yeah. So they did meaningful updates after they heard about the audit, they had meaningful updates, pretty media updates on all the modernization projects. So if you are interested in getting a media update and are not on a DAG, those of us that are, it's kind of like what we get at the DAG was kind of like what they got for all those projects. I definitely took some notes on some of the cool things I learned, but I did just want to share a couple of things that relate to conversations we had this spring. One thing that I thought was really interesting to hear was that mass timber and steel are penciling out to be about the same cost, given the experience that contractors had, I think probably at the airport, which was such a huge project, probably like everybody worked on it, but between that project, or just that, that they've been using it more often, and then concern about the impacts of tariffs down the road, that's what Stormy brought up at least, that they were surprised to see that. And so I think a lot of us that were on the Board and those of you that are new, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but might be a good time to say so if you want us to, when costs are close or equal, to lean toward the more sustainable sort of future-minded research. Evidence shows that like being around things that look and feel natural, like helps us all be better people and feel better about our lives, right? So there's a chance, I think, that we could be able to continue down the road of using mass timber in our, in our projects without it costing significantly more or even perhaps more at all. So that was really exciting to hear. The other thing was that they mentioned that lead gold is a state requirement, which I think I heard that right, but that was sort of interesting to me, so given the conversation we had, I just thought I would share in that. And then I'm burying the lead a little bit, but at the very end, there was like three or four minutes on seismic, and it included a few slides on where they are with that process. Many of us have been waiting for a report that was going to come out sometime this summer-ish, it sounds like. That's still being worked on, I'm not sure what the new plan is for getting that complete, but they had like a diagram of how they're prioritizing, and it was all very interesting. So I just wanted to flag that that's at about, I think like the two-hour, 20-minute mark on that meeting for anybody who's interested in getting an update on seismic. And I will leave it at that. I know that was a little long, but I feel like this is such an important issue, and just wanted to make sure you heard the pieces of news that I heard.
Yeah, and the audit, the internal auditor is talking about maybe trying to do the bond audit with the Audit Committee, Facilities Committee, and the BAC together, and that should bring up a lot of good questions, I would think, also save time.
To do like a once a, once a year combined meeting?
Yes, because they did come to the Audit Committee and gave the exact same report, so it seemed kind of silly that they would have to come twice, and then having all those minds there to ask the questions, I think would be great. So that might be something, you ask them if they're interested in doing that, the BAC.
That sounds like a perfect handoff for facilities. So, so as you guys are aware, I am chairing the new Facilities Improvement and Operations Committee. I'm hoping FIO is a little shorter and it's closer to FNO, which I think we used for a really long time, so we had, held an agenda setting meeting last week with myself, John Franco, Stormy Shanks, and Tom Rogers, and of course, Roseanne. And so I just kind of wanted to share what to expect in the coming weeks, since we haven't had a lot of communication for obvious reasons, it's been summer, we're new. So I started, our first meeting's going to be next week on the 12th, and requested a workback from the staff for the entire 25-26 school year, that we'll have a projected timeline for our biggest projects and dates that will require Board votes. What the votes will be for and when they will happen so that we're able to stay on track. And my goal is to use this document to plan our meetings, so that we're able to discuss things a couple of weeks before they actually come before the Board. So that's the goal, to have something by next week, and I'm not going to lie, it was a heavy lift for the staff on short notice to come with something, but they already had some work in progress, so I think we're going to be pretty close so that we can start planning out the rest of the year. So for us as a committee, I feel like that was a really important starting point, so that things are vetted and the public has an opportunity to comment well before anything is in front of the Board. So I've requested updates on the following, knowing that some of this will be duplicative to what you heard yesterday, it was yesterday, just top-line updates on the 2020 and 2025 bond projects, Jefferson, Cleveland, Wells, the Center for Black Student Excellence, where we are right now, and also facility improvements, like our athletic fields, including the Grand Bowl lighting project, seismic improvements, like what is the plan, like what are, not so much where we are, but like where are we going with new Board resolutions, and the Indian Education Program relocation as well, making sure that that doesn't fall off of our radar. There's a lot of projects and on deck, and I can tell you what stood out to me during the conversation is I learned, you know, when we talk about the OSM, that's really the high schools, and there's a lot of other smaller projects in the bonds, so how can we capture those in buckets, so the public understands where they land, where we understand how to ask for them, and come up with a couple of buckets that I'm hoping we'll be moving forward with when we talk about projects moving forward, and we've got school modernizations, which will focus on comprehensive renovations or rebuilds of entire school facilities to meet, of course, current educational and accessibility standards. Then we've got physical facility improvements. This would cover upgrades of existing infrastructure, things like ADA, seismic, athletics infrastructure, and any other capital improvements that are not tied to full modernizations. You could see that those don't live in OSM, but we need to capture them together, because I feel like that's how a lot of us look at them, it's how a lot of the public looks at them as well. Health and safety, this would target projects that affect student-staff health directly, like lead abatement, air quality improvements, like even like, you know, heating and cooling, security and safety. And then I've got the last one would be district-wide strategic initiatives. Initiatives aligned with equity, access, long-term district strategy, including the Center for Black Student Excellence and the Central Office relocation. So I wanted these buckets so that we don't lose these as we're moving through the year, that we really have a framework that we're checking in every month to see where we're at. And so lastly, in years past, the committee has not had a charter. I wanted to let you know that I've created a framework for a charter that I'll be sharing with everyone next week for both committee and public feedback, before we bring it in front of the whole Board, hopefully at our next regular meeting. So that's that.
Go ahead.
Is the Cleveland Fields, is that part of it?
Would it be, would it be part of it?
Yeah.
I would assume so, we'll know next week, and I think we'll have the opportunity to ask those sorts of questions, because I have those questions as well.
Great.
Thank you. Well, those reports were awesome. I really enjoy, I think this is the reason why we have these Board Committee Conference reports, is not only just updating the rest of the Board, but also just making sure that our work can be collaborative when it can be collaborative, but also focused on student achievement and our priorities. So thank you for all these reports, they've been really, I know we just, we just started, so I wasn't even expecting any today's, and I got a wonderful treat. So thank all of you. Any last comments or questions before we move on? All right, then we will move on. Next up, we have, considering a resolution that would move a small section of homes from the Portland Public School boundary to the Beaverton School District. This item was pulled off the July 22 consent agenda in order to allow time for staff to follow up on some of the questions that were raised. We have received a memo, I believe, yes, that addressed the questions, which I just, yep, there it is. And before we begin move to discussion, before we move this discussion, I would like to get this resolution on the table. Do we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 7148 approval, approving a school district boundary change between Portland Public Schools and Beaverton School District?
So moved.
Second, second.
Thank you. We have Director DePass Moos and Director Chase Miller, seconds. All right, is there any Board discussion?
Yes. So I went through, so we've got the memo from, that was dated October 5th, about our meeting and the financial impact that it has, and I do believe that the information in here is incorrect. It states that, I believe, only two of the properties have been developed, which when actually all 12 have. I did share this information with staff yesterday. There are homes on every lot, and most of which were built prior to the elections, so I don't believe that the fiscal impact statement is correct. Except I've notified staff, and I don't know how to ask, I'm new, but I think that we need to table this till the next meeting because the information's not correct.
I'll just point out at least that it does seem to be correct in some places on the materials, it's just the memo that's incorrect, so I don't know what, what to say, it's just...
Yeah, I was, I saw that, I think I heard that there were 12 homes, but then we read that there were only two, so I was confused about that, too.
Right, me too. I've nonver, using nonverbal strategies, called up my financial officer.
Very good.
To respond.
Yeah, I think that was also addressed in the question, answer form that we got from the staff, correct?
Yeah, so thank you, and thank you so much for your question. So Director LaForte did go this extra level of sleuthing through the Zillow app and actually found when things were built, when they were settled, which was not information that was available to me through the county website. So that was, gave us something more to look at in terms of values, and so I did put together an additional analysis to look at if they did were part of the 2025 bond approval, and therefore, subject to the levy, what that would look like. And so I provided a worksheet to Director LaForte as well, and, and I could share that information with you tonight verbally, and also with the worksheet if you'd like. Yeah, okay, get nuts. Not everybody's excited to see my worksheets, so this is exciting. So if they are subject to the levy, it's not the full amount that we would levy for properties that had prior bonds against, so the original collection would happen in 2026, and it would be for the amount of $1.17 per thousand of assessed value per home, because it's only that portion, and so that'll change over time as we retire those old debts. So I really only did one year of analysis, it looks like the contribution would be about just under $1,400 per year per residence, so a total contribution towards our debt service of just over $15,000 for those homes, if they qualify. And we can't really verify that until the county makes that information available to us.
It sounds like the county's assessment, or whatever the taxation assessment, hasn't caught up with the, what's actually on the ground?
Correct.
So, okay.
Yeah, and it wouldn't, we're not planning to sell bonds for the 2025, the first tranche that will happen right after the first of the year, so that collection won't happen until November of '26. So there will be time to, you know, get that information, but we don't currently have it available by each site today.
So for the worksheet that we're looking at, is that the rate is just for the levy, it's not including the bond?
That is the bond levy.
This is the bond levy, okay.
And it's just for the first year?
Right.
It's very complicated to figure out what that really means financially to us. If it's not on the tax rolls now, does that mean it doesn't apply because it's after we pass the bond?
I think the bills just haven't been issued yet, we just won't know until...
We won't know.
Until October.
And until we can connect with the tax assessor and really confirm that information, especially on timing of the levy, because the first issuance won't occur until 2026, I don't know that these sales count, so we'll have, it's just to be determined.
I am prepared to support this because of the, I mean, thank you for doing the financial analysis, that was really helpful, but when we look at the student impact and the transportation impacts, kind of ultimately sold me on just finishing up the transaction, proximity to the Beaverton School District and that they would have to literally bust by the school that's closest to them, kind of cemented it for me. So I appreciate the analysis, too, and that, I guess it'll take a So I appreciate the analysis, too, and that, I guess it'll take a year to get the full impact.
Sorry, I just want to get a little procedural clarity. Director LaForte, did you want to, were you, were you asking to move to put this resolution, to table this resolution for the next meeting?
Yes, to see if we can have more accurate information.
Or would it be, would it be next meeting, or would it be next year, after the bond?
I mean, ideally, I think it would be after the bond. I completely understand and value your concerns, but I think that the students that would be impacted, that would want to attend Beaverton in this area, I think we could grant the transfers or have an IGA with the Beaverton School District, where, I mean, clearly, we don't want to, you know, I would understand kids wanting to go to school with the kids across the street. I think there's a couple ways to do that without us giving up the revenue.
One of the other items of feedback that I heard was that for the folks living in that neighborhood, their votes would still count towards Portland, even if their students were attending, whether it was for the school board or for a levy for Beaverton School District facilities, they would still be in Portland for voting purposes. So that was some of the feedback that I received as well.
That's actually one of the concerns that I have about this. I appreciate the revenue aspect and doing the work digging into that. And to me, it seems like a student-centered solution would be the one that builds community and not only has kids going to school closer to where they live, but also the piece about, about ballots and families voting and weighing in on decisions that impact the schools that their kids go to. So even if a kid is getting a boundary exception, you know, the bonds they're voting on, the school board directors they're voting to elect, would be for PPS and not for Beaverton. And if it is that close, and the rest of the neighborhood is going to the school, to me, it makes sense to keep kids with their cohorts.
Just, thank you, Director Chase. I want to pause this discussion really quick, just to respect procedure. We do have a motion to move Resolution, to table Resolution 7148 to a future meeting. Do we need to table this, or sorry, do we need to put this on the table first to discuss the motion, and then whether it passes or not pass, depending on the discussion?
I don't think it's a motion to table it, I think it's a motion to postpone it. Table kills it.
Thank you.
So I, I don't mean to speak for you, but that's what I understood. Okay, so as a motion to postpone it, you probably want to determine whether or not there's a second and vote on that.
All right, do we have a, is there a second to postpone Resolution 7148?
Can I ask a question? Is it a point of order? So let's go, let me ask a question. Yeah, okay, point of order.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just curious if we can just overall discuss the issue and topic, and then discuss the motion to postpone, or if we have to just do the motion to postpone and then discuss.
There is no rule that specifies that, that's up to the chair's discretion. So you could decide which order to do it in, you want to make sure you get a second, if there is going to be a second for the motion to postpone, that's all. Discuss as however you determine.
Put me on the spot here.
Point of order.
Point of order. Are we doing a motion to postpone for two weeks, or a motion to postpone until the information that I think is really relevant to this discussion is available? Because I think what I heard, and I may have missed it, I think what I heard is that the tax assessment is, sounds very low for these very high-priced houses. And so to make a decision today based on revenue amounts that are on tax assessments that anybody who pays Portland taxes knows, as soon as the tax assessor comes in and looks at a five-bedroom, four-bath house versus a, what used to be there, maybe a plot of land, or a, yeah, is going to be significantly different in how we make this decision. So I guess, I don't, I don't know, I would have a different decision on whether I'm postponing it for two weeks, or whether I'm waiting for information that I think is critical to this decision.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, just kind of order, so I think the purpose of how, you know, Robert's Rules of Order works, right? So if we have a motion to postpone it, and then there's a second, that means there's enough board members that warrants a discussion. And then we would discussion, discuss the postponement and vote on, or, and then eventually vote on that. So the questions like that would rise then, like when and stuff, or like what the impact is and stuff like that. And then we would vote, and if it passes, then it would be postponed. But if it doesn't pass, we would go back to this resolution again and continue discussion about this resolution. At any point, you are also welcome to make another motion to, if new information comes about that seems like has changed quite a few minds, again, to make another motion, whether to postpone or table other things, or maybe even call the question. So that's kind of like the, the spirit of how that works. So just in the sake of efficiency, let's, let's, let's consider the, the motion to postpone Resolution 7148. Do we, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Director Sullivan, seconds. Now we can discuss the postponement before we vote on the postponement.
I have a question. What harm is there in waiting to take it up until after? I'd also be interested in knowing, honestly, the transportation cost, because if we're paying thousands of extra dollars to transport one kid with this different bus stop, that's going to balance out to me, too. So how long do you, how long would you need, you think, to provide the information? And is there a downside to waiting for that?
I currently do have information for the transportation cost. It's estimated to be at $8,000 if there's not additional needs, like any type of special needs of transportation, just to get through that neighborhood for the year.
So $8,000 a year?
Yeah.
But the property, property tax hit would probably be significantly greater than that?
Yeah.
Does that include the 70% that would be provided? I believe that we're.
The reimbursement.
The 70% reimbursement from the state, correct?
No, I don't think so.
So really only be a couple thousand dollars to PPS? I think we're just missing some information, that's all.
So I'm asking, is the downside of waiting and how long until we can get the information? Or maybe asked another way, is there an urgency to do this today? Or could it wait?
No, I think this has been on hold for a while, and so we were just hoping to move it forward for your consideration, one way or the other. So we can bring it back in six months. I don't see necessarily urgency, it's just an open item that, we will need to move towards a decision at some point. Currently, those are Portland houses, those students are attending Beaverton or Portland, whichever they're selecting at this point. I don't have necessarily the student information at this time either.
Do we know, do we know how many children there, there are? I mean, I guess I'm confused about that number. In the very last part of the table, it says, talks about the current average student yield per household in Oregon is .305 squared, and then the total estimated students impacted is 3.66, so is that how many kids are impacted in this development?
Yeah, that would be for all of the houses, based on an average yield per house.
Okay.
We don't know.
But based on the statewide average?
Yeah.
Jessica Engelsman, did you have a question or comment?
Thank you. I was just, I was kind of going to ask along this line. I thought I remembered from two weeks ago, while I was very jet lagged, that there was one student, and I also thought I heard that this student was potentially going to be getting a transfer to Beaverton. And so I guess my question is, this $8,000 is not a guaranteed cost of transportation, because this might be one student, and this one student might be going to Beaverton, and so there very well may be zero transportation cost, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's just sort of, all of this is estimate, because we don't have the accurate information?
Correct.
And delaying, there's no sense of urgency, and so delaying will potentially cost us nothing and potentially get us a lot of yield.
And I, if you don't mind, I'd love to, to jump in. So this is one of, just to kind of, a reminder to go back, this is one of those items that came up through community that, of course, would need board action, but we took it through the public process of, let's collect data, let's look at, you know, who's in that boundary area, and then let's present it to the board for a decision and action. I wouldn't say that there is anything that I know of that's pressing at the moment. I don't know how long, I'm sure the conversation started before I was superintendent, and I know that I had a couple of conversations, and there seems to be some movement about getting this pocket of students in this community to go over to Beaverton, and then just the public process for that. But first, we needed to have our public process. And so it's really for you all to decide on the matter, before we determine whether we move this forward, or we say not yet, or revisit later.
Thank you. I do just want to share one worry, because I mean, the longer we postpone, I know there's a lot of questions, but it's also, you know, directing staff to look into it, which is work that, you know, as we know, staff are already overworked, so I, I'm, that's only my only concern about postponing.
I think once we have the work of the assessor, which should be in October, we're going to know the answer, right? It's going to be pretty.
Yeah, they're really going to wait, it's going to be levied next year, so it'll be in 2026. I don't know that we'll have information that we need this October or November, because there's that lag time, those additional bonds haven't been sold. We would have a sense on the operating levy, so we would know that.
Any more discussion, questions? Yeah, postpone it. Yeah, let's keep it on the postponement first, I think.
Do, do we know what kind of money we're talking about here?
Yeah, I think just some napkin math, because I had additional information recently available to me, but between the maximum amount available, the yield from the levy, and a potential yield for the 2025 bond, would be about $45,000 per year.
Total for all, each house? Total for all the houses?
All of the houses.
Yeah.
I mean, just hearing that to me makes it, like even, I feel like we talk about student, being student-centered, and just knowing that that's the potential, kind of seals the deal for me, but.
It feels really low to me.
It's not enough to interrupt these families that, you know, move to an area and their neighbors go to the school, and it's convenient for them, and they're probably working families, and so, anyway, I'll go with what the group decides, but.
I'm worried that the, and this is why, we're getting this information right before the meeting, isn't the bond rate $2.50 per thousand?
It is, but a lot of that, the bulk of that, is for prior bonds that wouldn't.
Okay.
Wouldn't be levied against these properties, because they are new. So it really only, the bond in question, the series, would be the 2025, the most recent.
Okay, I see. Because that's why, maybe that's why this number feels low to me.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Is it, is the 1.17?
Yeah.
Another thing, I think, another thing to consider is also maybe the administrative burden on not only the families, but also on PPS as well, if there's constant transfer paperwork that needs to be done. Yeah, but anyways, another thing to consider.
Well, also think about running for office, and you don't have to pay Washington County the $25 to be in their voter guide for 10 families.
Director Engelsman?
Oh, real quick, I just want to say, it is already Multnomah County, or it's already Washington County. The 12 houses have already been zoned into Washington County.
So in the spirit of this discussion about postponement, I have a few thoughts. Number one is, in my own small little block, we are a very tight community. We have a text chain, we borrow onions and tools and take care of each other's kids. And I have a private school neighbor, I have a preschool neighbor who will end up going to the Chinese immersion program, I have another neighbor who's down in your zone but lives in my zone, and then across the street, I have a kid going to my kid's middle school that is not in my zone but lives in my zone, and his brother goes to private. So in our small community of about nine houses on a block in southeast Portland, all the kids go to different schools, and it doesn't affect this idea of community. And also, we both as a public school system and a community, parents have choices, and all parents are making decisions to send their kids to different schools, either within the PPS system, we're going across the river to MLC, or we're going across the, all the way to the other side of southeast to go, to, kids are going to Marshall, right, when we're doing bond updates. So I guess I am not swayed by the idea that we can't have community if kids are going to different schools, and that that might in fact grow our community as we are stretching out further. So that's not convincing me to move forward with a decision today without all the information, because the other thought I have is, as I drive around our city of Portland, not all of Portland is in Portland Public Schools, which, before sitting up here, has always confused me, and why we would have given up revenue in City of Portland to another school district. And with revenue, I mean, student, students going to our beautiful schools. So I am concerned about moving forward with the decision, even if it is just $45,000 in a time of budget crisis and budget crunch, and losing people and losing staff, and having families really unhappy, to give away $5, and 45 does seem low, but it is, it's a lot. So I guess I, in the spirit of wanting to get the information, I would like to have the updated information and be able to consider it thoughtfully before moving forward. Same.
Yes. Unless there's further questions?
The last thing that I would, that I would say is that I personally would, would say that it would be smart at this time to move this to October, you know, where we might have the information, we might not. We can reconsider whether we have enough information, and then if we don't, we can move it to next year. I think that that seems like the best course of action at this, at this point.
Great, thank you. And you just say there was no downside to waiting till October, correct? Okay. All right, we will now vote on the postponement of Resolution 7148. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Are you meaning to vote to postpone?
Yes, vote to postpone.
Yes.
Yes.
Just to, if I, if I may, I think you said two different things. Clarify, you're voting on the motion to postpone, not the actual resolution. Motion to postpone 7148, for clarity.
Yeah, let, let's just do a revote for clarity. We are now voting on the motion, thank you, to postpone Resolution 7148 to a future meeting. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Abstentions? Student Representative, Rotardo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry to make you do it again, thank you.
No worries. The motion to move Resolution 7148 to a future board meeting has been approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Rotardo voting, unofficially voting yes. Next up, we have, on the agenda is Finance Focus. Superintendent Armstrong, could you take this away?
Absolutely. As you know, our commitment is to bring financial topics to you once a month, and so tonight, we have Chief Financial Officer Michelle Morrison, who is going to talk about the state school fund, and this includes the state school fund distribution formula and student weighting. And so it looks like she's getting her presentation launched, and have the clicker if you need it. No?
I think the presentation is being pulled up right now. So we originally had planned alternating budget updates and these focused informational sessions, sessions with you, and we are having our first one tonight, and hopefully it'll be brief, but not necessarily, it's, it's higher level, but it's to get this solid understanding of, for you and the community, about where our funding comes from, what that combination of sources looks like, and where it goes. So tonight, we're going to focus on the state school fund, which is the pretty major component of our general fund operating budget. All right, so our agenda, we're going to review our operating revenue resources again for the general fund, and our budget document, that's the 100 fund, and then we're going to review state school fund distribution formula, so that's something I talk about frequently, because I think it's pretty critical for the revenue side of our equation. Also going to look at student weights and budget impact for the state school fund distribution, and then you guys can ask any questions. And then you guys can ask any questions. I'm thinking this is probably a 12 to 15 minute presentation, so if you have questions at the end, happy to answer. All right, so our operating revenue, we can go ahead. I've tried to incorporate more visuals and less words. My staff has provided feedback to me that says I need to be more clear with our information. So this is our general fund resources. You can see the local revenue, again, working in some of those budgetary accounting, account code strand components. The 1,000s for us are local revenue and that includes local property taxes, the gap tax that we are fortunate to have, local option levy, interest earnings, rentals, and then other revenue. You can see that by the pie chart, that it is local property taxes and state school fund that makes up the majority of our revenue. We do have the equalization formula between the two. So for example, the reason they're both orange is because if we receive more local property taxes, we'll receive less state school fund because those go into a big pot and come to school districts in a per-student distribution formula. All right, I think we can move.
I'm sorry, I've been waiting to ask this question since I first looked at this the other day. Can you tell us which one is the 34.2% and which is the 41.4% between the two oranges?
My recollection serves me that it, the state school fund is the 34.2%. So we, we do raise more local property taxes than we receive from the state school fund.
Thank you.
All right, historical trends. This is for each of those groups of sources. You can see over time since 2223, the occurrence, the 2425, those are budgeted numbers, not numbers, but those indicators there are budgeted, they aren't actual yet. We'll have those for you soon. We do have our adopted budget for 2526. And I think the, the trend that is concerning on this slide has got the little red arrow pointing to it. And that is the decline of our, our fund balance, our reserve or contingency over the last couple of years because that's using one-time money to, to support our operations. So that's, that's a trend that we need to maybe stabilize. Go ahead, all right. Some notes on our current state. So again, they're broke, broken out on the left-hand side. You can see under the 5,000s, red is my danger color. So we have our fund bound, balance decline again and use every reserves. And we had a significant transfer coming in to support the 2526 budget that is, is also one-time. So there's a clever, but unnerving, little graphic there that shows under the revenue side of our balanced budget, those are one-time funds propping that up. And so that exacerbates our issues moving into next year.
May I ask, is that all related to that fund balance? Which I know we've discussed going as low as possible with that balance and, but it looks like it's trending down?
Yeah, it is trending down.
Do you know if it's still at 5% or 10? I think.
Our, our adopted budget has targeted 5%.
5%, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question. And so moving on towards the state school fund distribution formula, so there, there are ORS, all about that. But I think even taking one step back further, I'm not necessarily a tax expert. I know people that are, but this is a history of, over time, we had our pre-measure five where everything was levied. And I, I don't know who here remembers that. I'm not going to speak for myself because it dated a little bit. And then measure five came into the picture with the idea of creating these limits around that and a more standardized distribution statewide of those funds. And then measure 50 came into play as well. So the, those are some changes in law over time that kind of put us into this distribution formula. So I just wanted to show that that's this historical context. All right, there's that chart, again, intentional. So you can see 75% of the general fund is the state school fund distribution, our property taxes go in, income taxes go in, and it comes back to the district in the form of a per-student distribution. That was an effort by the state to equalize the amount of support that students were getting throughout the state, especially when there are communities that weren't able to pass their operating levies. Go ahead. And this is a sample of our state school fund, the equalization formula. This is Portland. But on the Oregon Department of Education website, they do have this information available for every district. They just have like this running list of all of them. And you can see the, the different weights that our students receive. So ADMR stands for average daily membership resident. And so that's the number of students over the period of the year. And if they enroll or unenroll throughout the year, that gives a partial number there. So that's why it's not, the kids are in fractions. That's the amount of the, the year that they were with us. You can see the amount of students that we have in EL programs and they receive an additional .5 weight for us. And again, that's assuming students that need additional services, need additional support in order to be able to receive those services. Students, and we'll just go down the list. You can see our IEP students capped at 11%. So that's, we had lots of advocates in Salem last session talking about getting that changed. And our unfortunate revenue forecast that came in at the, the last hour, kind of pulled that back off the table for districts. But I do think there was some good work done there and that would benefit Portland Public Schools quite a lot. So go down the, the list. You can see we start out with 42,281 students. And by the time all of that weighting comes in, we have 5,1,299.
Clarifying question, just on what I'm seeing on the slide.
Yeah.
It has the, I know, I understand the cap, the 11%. Then it seems like then we are adding students on IEP above the 11%. So I thought we couldn't go above the cap. So those are the kids that aren't, that are like exceptional to the cap, but we still get the adder?
Well, that, that above the 11% cap, that is a calculation that the department does, kind of over the course of the years, they review district impact. So for example, high-cost disability students, other issues, and they kind of weigh those needs across the state. And then they have their own distribution formula for that particular line item. So that's something that we can roughly estimate, but it's not something our data will dictate to us. It is dependent upon experience of other districts.
I'm still confused. So the cap's 11%. Is this just a different 11% than the cap? The students on IEP above 11%. Is that a different 11% or is it still giving us an adder? I'm sorry, for the kids that?
Yeah, so for example, we have 7,624 students on IEPs. And with that 11% cap, only 4,600, $4,600 students are weighted.
Right, but then what's that second line?
So that again is a statewide formula for distribution.
Can I also just add, Chief Morrison, we also have Chief Buno, who is itching to get up and answer questions as well, so.
Super excited to see my friend.
Are you catching what I'm, are you catching what I'm putting down? Why I'm confused?
Yeah, so the, the second number is the number of students above the 11%. And so we do get ADMR for them. We do not receive ADMW for that number of students. And so that's why they're separated out like that.
Tell us the difference between ADMW and ADMR.
So ADMR, like Chief Morrison said, is the standard funding mechanism for every student. ADMW is the additional weight for the students with disabilities, so, which happens to be at 1.0, so an additional funding, up to 11% for students with disabilities.
I have a quick question. If there's a student who is, for example, in foster care and also needing English language programming, does that student fall into both categories? Yeah.
Do they receive multiple weights? Yes.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm confused. So if it's capped at 11%, then we still get some for those that are above the 11%? We're still getting funded above 11%?
So I'll, I'll phrase it slightly differently. So we get the general education funding for all of the students. We do not receive the special education funding for any student above the 11%.
But, but you're showing more for the IEP above 11%.
What they're doing is, what, what the state does, so this is ODE's table that they publish on their website, they're separating out the number of students above 11%. So 12,66.9 is the number that we do not ha, do not receive the ADMW for.
Got it. I think that's where we might have been confused.
But you did take that number and multiply.
But you did take that number and multiply it by one.
Yeah, so what is, what is this number doing on this sheet? If this is the number, like it seems not relevant, if it's the number of kids that we're not getting funding for.
Well, it's, they're, they're accounting for all 42,281.2 students that were funded ADMR for. So that's what they're doing in this particular table. Because we do receive that, in the, in the formula, we do receive that calculation for, or that funding for all of the, those numbers of students. Then, in addition to that, there's weights, which is.
I blame their image.
So do we, so do we receive some amount of additional funding for students above the 11%?
No.
I'd like to request to actually send you guys an update on that, if that's okay? Because I can see why it's confusing in this table.
Yeah, I think we need like a flow chart or animation.
Thank you.
Yes.
Animation.
Just, just so, just so I know, so the number that we get is the 42 or the 51?
The 51,299.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. I got confused and now I think I'm back.
All right, thank you. So again, this information is available on the Oregon Department of Education website for all districts. And it's something that folks visit regularly. I know our union partners are usually pretty interested when these estimates come out.
Can I ask one more clarifying question? It's probably really obvious, but on the numbers, there's a count of one, there's a count of students that the supply is for, and then there's a, a one, meaning each one of those, 42,281, for instance. Students in poverty then, the 38,22.35, is that a count of the number of students that we would consider experiencing poverty?
The, the poverty number is, is in, again, it's another demographic piece that the department pulls from multiple sources and reports to us. That's not something that we report to them.
I see, I see.
For each one, yes.
It's really to identify kind of the students. And then the .25 though, is that, I don't understand how that relates. So it looks like there's a count of students and the .25, is that an additional weight given to?
Yes.
Okay, great, so I get it. So it, a student experiencing poverty would be in the ADMR 42,281 and also considered in that other demographic group.
Right, it would, they would, we would get additional resources for that, to support that student.
Correct, okay, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great question.
I have one more based on that information that you just gave about us not reporting and the ODE doing the reporting. Can we push back? Because I think that statistics are suggesting that a lot more than 3,822.35 students in Portland Public Schools are experiencing poverty. And so where are they drawing that from? And do we have an opportunity to push back? And I know that it's sensitive to ask families to self-report this information because of the stigma, but that seems, sorry, that seems very low to me out of, I mean, 6%. Exactly. I don't think we're at 6% of, yeah. So what do we, that's a lot of revenue for PPS.
I do think that there is an opportunity to share that information and that perspective with the department. They are applying the same, again, metrics towards our calculation as across the state. So just a, a change for us would be a change for all school districts in the state, for better or worse. So I think that that's a consideration that they need to make as well when they're making a shift. There was a change probably eight to 10 years ago now in the data that they were pulling from, it had to do with the census data. And again, I can get additional clarification on that from the department.
Okay, so it's, it sounds like it's not balanced against cost of living, it's a statewide average thing.
It'd be really interesting to track that number because of the cost of housing in Portland and the cost of living. And it could be that we do, we do not have as many students experiencing poverty because it's expensive to live in Portland and so you're ending up in another school district, for instance, like Centennial or David Douglas.
So I can, I can tell you that that number is not in alignment with the number of students that meet our direct certification rate. I, so I don't, we would have to get more information to tell you where that number specifically derived from. So they're using a different number for that calculation. So in alignment with what you said, we have a higher number of students that, under the category of direct certification, would qualify, so.
It'd be interesting to know how on, if each line is kind of calculated a little bit differently, it would help to know what the logic is behind. Because I think, you know, you're, you're reading it across and you're like, oh, it's a one-to-one relationship. Then you get down into some of the subgroups and it's, the calculation's based on averages. I don't know if they can, if they have that on the ODE site, but I think it'd be helpful in terms of just understanding where the numbers are coming, coming from.
Yeah, the link in the presentation does go to the rule and it is kind of vague. So I do think that there has been some, you know, per, person.
I will just say there's, it looks like, I just looked at the agenda for this, this week, obviously, earlier today. And it looks like there is a, like a school finance, like whole hour thing that you could go to and they'll probably maybe get more into detail, for what it's worth, this weekend at the OSBA conference for those, Oregon School Board Association, for the people that are watching online.
Director Sullivan? Oh, you didn't, didn't have a question? All right. Any other questions?
I was going to say, where do you get that? And she explained.
All right, well, thank you. I have some information to follow up with you on. I didn't expect to spend as much time on this slide, but it's definitely a rigorous conversation around factors that really impact the amount of revenue received. So I think we're ready to move on. All right, the rationale again, this is a revenue formula, it's not an expenditure formula. And what that means is that for ELs, when we receive X amount for the, the students and then the additional amount for the waitings, for that, there's no statutory requirement that we spend that exact amount on those services. So just a reminder that that's a revenue formula, not an expenditure formula. There is another factor in our state school fund for teacher experience. So if we are higher or lower than the state average for teacher experience, there's a minor adjustment in our formula for that per-student amount. And the rationale there is our, our, our longer-term teachers are earning more over time and the state recognizes that. We also receive for student transportation, and that is student home-to-school transportation, so not activities so much, but they do recognize the additional cost and that that is a lawful requirement. and that that is a lawful requirement for public schools. And we receive a 70% reimbursement on those costs. And it is figured into our general fund revenue already. So, that's not new. It's just another factor of the state school fund. All right, this is a terrible slide. But what I'm trying to do here is show, over time, how the fiscal years are connected. Where in, coming up this December is when we will submit, each district in Oregon, all 197 will submit their estimate of membership and revenue for the '26-'27 school year. And that's what the department will base their estimates on when they send those out. And so, we receive multiple estimates for multiple years as we move through our year. And so, again, those are public and on the website. And sometimes there's some interaction with our partners and if they go up and down. All right, I think probably the last point on this slide is that in May, whoa, I know, we're getting in a hurry here. In May, we receive an adjustment to our state school fund for the prior year. So, in May of 2026, we're going to see an adjustment to our revenue, up or down, depending on how the state reconciled for the '24-'25 school year. And so, again, that's just this another long thread between school years as we're doing our planning. All right. Budget process, you can see we're moving into budget awareness. Soon to follow, our budget planning and then budget building. You guys have been through or followed that process, I think, in the past. So, as we move into October, we'll have additional financial information and reporting for you based on our current year enrollment and also our first full month of payroll and other costs, which is the biggest part of our budget. All right. Student weights and budget impact, a little bit more on that. It feels like we've talked about that a lot. So, our average daily membership for resident for each one student is currently, for the '25-'26 year, $11,000, almost $12,000. So, 11, 8, 12. And so, when you think about those additional weights and how they can add up to support students, it's really important that we are collecting and reporting data on those services. Okay. All right, extended ADMW. So, this is a function of our state school fund distribution to help districts when they are in a period of declining enrollment. And so, it helps them adjust by allowing a one-year fallback on prior ADMW. But you have to adjust over time. So, it's to ease the burden on districts. And we are currently using this function as we navigate our budget challenges. Oh, finally. Thank you guys so much. It's been a great discussion here tonight. So, happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chief Morrison. Really appreciate it. It's been very educational. And also, thank you, Chief Buno, for also volunteering your time up here, too. What was your last question? Go ahead.
Sorry. I was just going to thank you also for the presentation. And the graphics are great. They're really nice. And I love this slide. I think it's Slide 17 that has the budget process kind of graphically, you know, depicted. So, we know what to expect. And we're going to have a tough budget year next year, just FYI, everybody. And so, I think having, you know, this information ahead of time is really helpful.
Thank you.
I was going to say thank you. I also had one quick last question. In looking at this historical trends slide, I guess I was wondering why we only went back three years, which in my mind is not sort of aligned with the definition of historical. So, it's not, it's post-COVID, it's post-Student Success Act. And so, I wonder if we were to draw this out to something that seems more accurate with historical concepts, if we went to like 2018, 2017? If you have an idea and if you could provide in the future what that would look like? Because I think just three years is very narrow. Yeah, it doesn't seem historical. So, I guess I'm curious, this is a trend. I would like to see a historical trend, and I guess I would like to go back, 2018, 2017.
Well, I would love to provide that to you. It has changed a little bit over time, so I'm happy to do that. This is what was available in our adopted budget book. And so, that information should be somewhat recognizable. So, that's why I pulled it from there. But I'm happy to go back and do a 10-year look.
All right, thank you. Really appreciate the presentation.
I would just like to remind everybody who's watching this out there about the funding and keep going down to the legislature and all these wonderful letters that you're sending about your needs. Send them down to your legislators. And I think we just have to remind everybody, every single board meeting, that this is essential.
Thank you. Next up, we have an update on the implementation of our personal electronic devices in schools policy. This policy was adopted in January last school year and requires the students have their cellphones off and away all day. Dr. Armstrong, could you introduce this topic?
Yeah, absolutely. So, Chief of Schools, Isaac Cardona, will provide an update on the implementation of our district's new cellphone policy, which requires students to keep their phones off and away all day. This policy was designed to support focused, respectful learning environments where students can engage fully in their education without unnecessary distractions. Our district policy also aligns with recent statewide efforts to address cellphone use in schools. Governor Kotex's executive order that was signed this summer calls on all Oregon schools to implement similar off-and-away practices to support student health, safety, and academic success. I will turn it over to Dr. Cardona, who will walk us through the details of where we are at in the implementation process. Dr. Cardona?
Thank you so much. I'm Isaac Cardona. Nice to see you all. So, the purpose of today is to update you on the changes to our personal electronic device policy. As Dr. Armstrong mentioned, on July 2nd, Governor Kotex signed Executive Order 2509, which aims to improve student educational outcomes and mental well-being across the state by prohibiting cellphone use for students during the school day in all of Oregon's K-12 public schools. Some highlights include that every school district is required to have a policy that prohibits the use of electronic devices by students from the start of the school day to the end of the regular instructional hours in the school day. The policy must be adopted by October 31st and effective no later than January 1st. The policy must provide clarity on how personal electronic devices will be stored during the school day. And so, we got this, and when our team did a crosswalk of our board policy and Governor Kotex's executive order, we made some small adjustments to be in line with the new order and then circulated that internally to our school admin teams. I've linked all of these documents in the presentation, so hopefully you all can access them. This is where we are in our current communication plan. So far, we've shared this with principals and the adjusted language. We did our weekly huddle, where we communicated the current changes, the shifts that occurred. We had our first big principal meeting today called Leadership. And principals began to grapple within their cohorts or feeder patterns with what each school was doing. Principals are aware of the changes, and we've done a crosswalk. We've shared all of that. Comms from schools will be next. That'll come in this current month. So, we've asked everyone to update their school climate plans to include what they are doing at each individual school site to enforce the policy. It'll be on their websites and communicated in back-to-school newsletters. Each school has the ability to enact the storage of cellphones in different ways. So, those methods will be communicated before the beginning of the school year. We'll also have some comms from our central office. I'll send those out to all of our families and students closer to the beginning of the school year, just outlining what each, you know, what the current policy is, why we are doing that, and how we'll be operating each of our schools. This is also more than just cellphones. It includes any device that can text or access the internet. That includes like watches or smartwatches. And we also have office hours continuing throughout the month of August so that folks can join and ask questions. That can be principals or school personnel, just to have clarity before the beginning of the school year. And those are all virtual connections, but folks can also find us at our school leadership this week. I've linked four important documents here. If you are new to the school board, the first is our personal electronic device policy. The second is the admin-directed directive. The third is our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. This was updated with current language. And the last was the Plan for Storage and Communication by School. Every school, every year, completes the school climate plan, and these are posted on district websites. And so, it's a great place to say, hey, parents, you can go right to this website and find what your school is doing. That's the bulk of it. Would love to have questions, if you have any questions or any clarifications.
My first question, you mentioned in the policy, or in the order, there was a line about how devices will be stored. And as my understanding, that was not, there wasn't really any guidelines? Like, we were kind of leaving that up to the schools in our original policy. So, how does that play into this? Do we have to update that?
It is still up to schools. So, off-and-away, they don't have access to them during the school day. Some schools might choose to use, for example, today I heard from schools, like in K8s, they're using a caddy, and they give that during their morning advisory, and they keep it during the daytime. Other schools are utilizing yonder pouches. Some have like a box they might have in classrooms. And so, each school does have a different thing they might be engaging in. And so, principals will be communicating that to schools and students, saying, here's what our school is doing in this current year.
Got it. So, we wouldn't be out of, my only worry is that we would be out of compliance as a district because we, as a district, are not providing something for individual schools as to how these would be stored.
The district policy is off-and-away. So, I think that is, is that what you're asking? Like, every school will have to enforce off-and-away in some capacity? But the way they do that might shift or change.
Well, it's just that in the order, the order, it seems like it wants us, the district, to give some guidelines for how they are to be stored. But we're just saying, you decide, do the schools? Is that okay within this order?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have some, well, there might be a question in here. I have some concern around the school response to violations of the policy. And the idea of searching kids for phones feels like a lot when, I mean, certainly, we need to enforce the directive and make sure that kids are following the rules. And that feels violating to me for personal communication devices. I'm curious what maybe we've learned from PPS's rollout so far, of how frequently this is happening, to what extent we anticipate having to resort to those kinds of measures.
I'm not sure of the exact amount of times this has happened so far, but I can get back to you with that answer? Yeah.
If I can piggyback a little bit on Director Chase Miller's question, my concern was similar. And I guess I am reluctant to have a student lose instructional time as a response to having a communication device that we, as a society, all of us have been looking at our phones multiple times during this board meeting. And so, I am concerned that somewhere in here in this progressive discipline, my question is, how far will it go? I saw in there, quote, "elevated response." And so, I'm just wondering, how far up are we willing to go?
They will not lose instructional time. So, Governor Kotex's order makes it very clear there should not be a loss of instructional time. That includes suspensions or, you know, being pulled out of class for this.
But that's not clear in our policy. It just says progressive discipline, elevated response. So, our policy, there's nothing stopping us from going above the governor's order, but our policy doesn't do that.
You should not have a loss of instructional time. You, you know, you should not, above that would mean a suspension, but you cannot have that.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah.
So, a second worry that I have, the searches are separate concern. But the second worry I have is the amount of time. I know we're saying it's not a loss of instructional time, but when kids are coming in, and there are 35 elementary school students or 35 middle school, or however many there are, the amount of time it takes for those students to collectively move and put their phone and their watch into a basket and then move back, I think we are being naive if we're saying there isn't a loss of instructional time. And so, I want to recognize that, that I also want to say loudly and clearly that this is an unfunded mandate. I don't think that there's any funding that's come along for yonder pouches or anything else from this governor's order. But I do have concerns about how much time, and if a bell rings at 11:42 at the end of a class, how much time does the teacher have to allow that's not instructional time anymore because we're now collecting phones before moving on to the next classroom? So, I don't think I have a question in here. I have a concern that for an already short school year, we are now having to abide by guidelines that are going to cut into the classroom time.
Actually, I would like to reply to that. I do like what you said about the unfunded mandate. Thank you for saying that, and that was very appreciated. I do have a concern, as someone who's taught before and after cellphones were implemented, you lose a lot more instructional time from all the distractions that cellphones create. Way more than the back. I also want to share some kudos. Since the implementation of our policy, I just want to share some good news. Not only have I heard wonderful news from our teachers that very appreciate this, but some of you know, I worked very part-time as a mentor supervisor for, we used to call them student teachers, but they're teacher candidates for our master programs at our teacher schools, right? And their professors have said very boldly, many, many, I've heard it from a few professors already, that in Portland Public, their student teachers are placed in Portland Public. In the old days, it used to be that their classroom management classes at, in college, or in their master's degree program spent all day long talking about how to deal with cellphones. And it was dominating all the instructional time in their schools. And now, these masters candidates are now talking about real stuff, like how to actually implement practices or improve teaching. And so, the professors have noted that in Portland, their students that are placed in Portland Public are having a lot better time compared to some other districts that don't have. I do want to raise an issue, potential issue, just kind of flag something. Again, I'm very, I apologize for raising this now. I honestly just thought of this an hour before our meeting. But in the administrative directive that's associated with our policy, 8.60.038AD, under Roman numeral three, it said, "assigned lunch periods." It says, "Recognizing that district high schools allow students to go off-campus for lunch." Okay. "Students in grades nine to 12 may have access to their personal electronic devices during designated lunch period unless the school administrator chooses to enforce a stricter policy." I'm just kind of flagging that because that may run counter to the spirit of the governor's executive order as well as potentially our policy as well. So, I just want to flag that, and that may need to be revisited.
Thank you.
I had the experience of visiting a couple of schools while we were, and talking to teachers about this, just to hear their thoughts. And also, just witness students and moving through the building, just how many times in a conversation walking down the hall that there was a cellphone infraction. It was literally every few seconds. And this was during a passing, not even a passing period. It was not even a passing period, but it was just, you know, the counselor I was walking through was, there's a phone, there's a phone, there's another one, there's three over there, there's a fight upstairs. And so, yeah, and it's unfunded. So, that made it very, very difficult for us. I think what's interesting to me is that we have kind of a similar policies. And in PPS, we wanted to focus on a policy that met our equity policy. And so, the discipline thing is a potential area where poor students or students of color might be subject to more searches and disciplinary action. That concerns me. And yeah, the unfunded piece concerns me, too. I've heard a little bit through the grapevine that some parents are asked to help kind of contribute to these and some aren't. And so, I have a question about whether there's any additional community engagement, And so I have a question about whether there's any additional community engagement, if there could be like, I think you said there would be open office hours, but if, if there was a open office hours virtual that parents could drop in on through this fall, maybe there's a few of them in August, September, October, that have concerns about their student not having their phone with them. The other thing I wanted to note is that we had a really strong, I think, educational component, first week of school when students were coming in, and I thought, I thought that was a really great idea, and I hope that's still happening. So that was the, the presentation about, you know, this is the policy in our school, this is what we expect of you. And so I hope that that's still part of this, you know, new learning.
Yeah, and schools have a jumpstart in sixth grade, ninth grade, and for seniors, and so that's a great time to acclimate new students to a school building and say, here's what we currently do, and the cellphone policy would be a part of that.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And, and we know that students will push back, because that's their job when they're in high school, as they're coming into their own, and, and that's okay. But yeah, I, I hope to partner with, you know, if there's anything that we can do as board members, and I would encourage board members to, to walk through the schools and see how that's being implemented, and how it, it actually, I've heard in the lunchrooms brings students together, it's like a joyful, a joyful noise of students talking to one another, rather than, you know, this quietness where everyone's in their own world. So, thank you.
I would like to make a few, a few comments quickly, one, one of which you mentioned the loss of time, of instructional time in storing phones at the beginning of classes. In my personal opinion, I don't think that this will take very much time. It depends on the enforcement method. The one that my school is using is like locked cabinets, like with both locked cabinets and caddies, it's pretty simple, you walk in the door, you know? And in general, you know, in most schools, we have pretty, pretty lengthy passing periods, and most of the time, we're already losing time, you know, because people are coming in and they're milling about with their friends. There's all sorts of other losses of time. And as Dr. Wong mentioned, you also lose time dealing with the phones. Also on the assigned lunch periods, I just wanted to second what he said, that seems concerning, although I do support the, this, and that we do absolutely need to figure if this is going to run into that, how, like what leeway we have there, because I think that this is, that this assigned lunch periods section is crucial. And then especially, although again, I, I do disagree with, with you about the, the nature of students not talking when they, when they have their phones available, because that has not been my experience. You know, the entire time I've been in Portland Public Schools, I, I've never looked around, like the, at Roosevelt, we have a very nice open commons, you know? I've never looked around and seen more than 20% of people on their phones. Like, the majority of people are talking, you know? I don't, I honestly don't understand where this notion has come from, that students are choosing to spend their lunchtime on their phones.
Just, it's like literal observation and hearing from building administrators, so probably not the most robust, you know, survey or whatever, but it's just based on two observations.
And I think, again, every place is different, I think that's key. But I have observed it, and I also have seen principals, and especially in middle schools, that have tried it with and without it, and they were like, no, let's not do it anymore. So I, I think, yeah, every place is different, so thank you.
Yeah, and I think we have to remember that we started working on this last year, because parents were coming to, I mean, not parents, teachers were coming to us practically in tears, saying, please do something. It's just not possible to teach in this situation. So I feel glad that we were ahead of the governor, maybe we pushed the governor, but something's being done, and it's probably not going to be perfect for a while, till people figure it out. But I imagine your principals are talking together and finding out what works, and there'll be some changes, and I, I am sure, it's not perfect, it's going to be a whole lot better than it was. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Swett?
I had a couple of questions, just sort of on process, I guess. One of which, honestly, probably because I came on right after the cellphone policy passed, I haven't heard much about it, is the first I heard that watches were included. And I really feel like elementary school parents are like totally out of the loop and thinking this applies to them and to watches, because a lot of elementary school kids have watches. And so make sure you guys step up, just my hot tip, seeing that I did not know that my child could not go to school with her watch, she's a rising fifth grader, I think that means 95% of elementary school parents don't know if I didn't know that. So I think it will be helpful to communicate with those families, and not just middle school, high school, and make sure they know this also applies to watches at your elementary school. Because I think a lot of us are like, I'm not, my kid won't have a phone till she's a freshman in high school, that's the plan here. So I'm just thinking this is a problem way out for me, and not thinking about it. So just a flag there. I don't know, I can't imagine who does. And then, or if I missed it and like everyone else knows, then please, it's very embarrassing, nobody tell me, everybody just tell me that it's fine. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was, you mentioned in like the agenda slide, that there needed to be changes to our board policy based on the executive order. And I just wanted to ask what the process was for making those changes to the board policy, like, I'm assuming that'll have to go through the policy committee, and by when do we need to make those changes, just so we make sure that we have it in our radar, so that we as a board can adopt those changes for your purposes at the right time, et cetera.
And I don't know if there are any changes to happen in the policy, but in the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, we did shift that there's no exclusion possible, and so that wording changed, just being very clear about that. So I don't know if there are any changes in the policy, but I can get back to you if there are any for the policy.
Great, thank you. I just saw the changes to the board policy was on your agenda, so just wanted to make sure we got those if you need them.
Director LaForte?
Dr. Cardona, I can tell you, the board policy is broad enough that complies with the executive order.
Thank you. Director LaForte?
Yes, I have a quick question, and I'm not sure if you're the right person for this question, but why is there not uniform implementation across all schools? At least, you know, at the high school level, like high schools are doing one thing, middle schools are doing another thing, elementary schools are doing another thing, I have to think is, I always find it difficult when every school is doing something different. Why is that? And, yeah, why is that?
It's vague enough that every school can choose, some schools, you know, a caddy might work in elementary school, it sounds like it might work in a high school as well. Some folks, you know, prefer a yonder pouch, they tried it last year, maybe it's very popular. And so everyone has some flexibility in how they implement it, just based upon what might work at their school.
I know, I'm asking why? That's my question. Do you know why?
I would say, just maybe because it's open to be often away as the policy, and so the way that it's enacted is open to just following that.
I think there's, to answer also, to answer that question, there was a lot of discussion last year, as you know, it was very heated, and lots of people for and against, a lot of parents are for, a lot of teachers are for, but I think there was also a lot of need to also figure out, and flexibility to figure out the, improve our practices, you know, like, find out what's best practices, you know, for example, maybe pouches were the best, but maybe lock boxes were better, you know, we didn't, I think there was some discussion about we didn't know, and so that kind of gave that flexibility allowed them to, that was part of it, I'm not saying that was the only answer, but that was a big part of the discussion.
I think our, our building administrators also, we heard that they know their school communities really well. And so I, I understand what you're saying, because I, I would like to, I think it'd be much neater to have a band of how you do this. And then when you talk to a building administrator, you hear, we know our community better than anybody else. You know, you've got a, a community that might have lower impulse control, for instance, building-wide, you have a different approach than, you know, you just, the approach to discipline or theory of action is different in each building. So I think ultimately, after talking to building administrators, that's, I kind of fell on that, rather than this kind of strict, you know, this is how we handle it at the high school level. Because I was a little confused, and, and not super happy either, when I first heard that it was like popcorn style.
I was just kind of wondering if it was more, is it the building administrators that want the flexibility, or is it parents that want the flexibility?
That's a great question that I don't have the answer for.
Hi, everybody.
Surprise!
Hi, I, I heard the question, I hope you don't mind me coming up, and, you know, obviously, as my former role as chief of schools, I was heavily vested and involved in this level of conversation last year. And so to kind of come back to Director LaForte's question, I would say the majority of our schools already had existing cellphone policies, and Director DePass was right, is that the context within the school is different, right? I think the, the, Grant was the, kind of the first with the yonder pouch, which kind of changed the game. I think, and of course, we know that with yonder pouches, there's an immense cost, and that is not funded centrally. I mean, those are building-level expenses, and not everybody can do the yonder pouches. I think ideally, if that were the case, all schools, especially now with this very distinct often-away policy and the exec order, I think that we would absolutely do the yonder pouch, but we just can't fund it centrally right now. But I will say this, we are a lot further along from a consistency standpoint than, than we ever were before. And I will say, we were ahead of the game in adopting the policy, and it just so happens that the governor came through with the exec order, and we were just able to say, hey, we're, we're on the way with that already. So kudos to, to the board for that.
Speaker Representative?
Yes, I forgot to mention earlier that I'd also make the comment on this administrative directive, and on the searches, and I'd like to ask the question as to whether searches are really necessary, because this isn't, no, this isn't, you know, like a vape, you know, or like weed or any other drugs, this isn't an imminent danger to a student, you know? And so I, you know, if you, obviously, our, our building staff should, should immediately respond if they see a student with their phone out. But, but again, I would ask, because again, I agree that we are naive to say this won't affect, this won't affect instructional time. But, and, but otherwise, you know, there, there are many students for which, you know, searching can be a, can be a stressful experience. And as, you know, as we've already discussed, a, there's potential for it to be, you know, targeted. So this all to say, you know, I, my, my question would be, as to whether this, you know, this is really necessary in the administrative directive.
There's potential for bias as well.
And I think that brings us all the way full circle to Director Chase Miller's first comment about students getting targeted, and Director LaForte's question about it not being implemented across the board. And you said, you're, the idea that discipline is going to be different, and I'm of course thinking of involved parents who raise a stink if their kid is being disciplined for having the phone 15 times a day, versus someone whose parent is not involved and is, so then, I feel that at least in the discipline, because the language of elevated response and progressive discipline, and also the school administrator for the lunch policy, choosing to enforce a stricter policy, there just feels like too much wiggle room. And I, you know, if a child or a student of any, is leaving a school, the policy should be that they get their phone or their watch back as they're going out for lunch. There should not be like a, a school administrator choosing to enforce a stricter policy, but I'm, I'm really, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that there isn't a broad, clear, so that students and their families know what to expect in a discipline situation.
Can I jump in, and I know, I know you want to respond, but to, to Director Chase Miller's point, you raised a great point, and that's why I was wondering about the yonder pouches, you read my mind, because it is very simple to hand over a yonder pouch, and I don't know if this, you know, clearly this isn't the budget year for it, but I think moving forward, having a policy of the types of, what are we, what do we call it, device holders, like whether it's yonder pouches for high school, whether it's caddies for middle school, if it's yonder pouches for all, that we're eventually going to have to get to addressing that problem, so it is equitable, in a way that addresses, you know, your concerns, which is all of our concerns, because it's, you know, I, you know, I, I do have a student at Grant, and I did live through this last year, I just have my own unique experience, and it does work. It's a great tool, and I think it would be amazing if we could find a way to afford it, because it's, it's a winner, even though some people don't agree.
The data doesn't lie, though, about the student mental health and the benefits, and the teachers love being able to teach for a whole solid period, and, yeah.
And the one thing I will say too, is that, that every year, there's a continuous calibration regards to student discipline, right? And, and so this is one, and I think Dr. Cardona mentioned it, is that there has to be immense calibration, I think, across the system. Because I think we know that if, if one high school is doing one thing that is different than another high school or other high schools, then there's a ripple effect. Because we'll hear it, right? We'll hear that, well, Grant is doing this, how come we're not doing this, from, especially from an enforcement perspective, as you mentioned. And, and there's, there's no want to, to, to search, like, and, and obviously, the bias piece, that was a concern that came up when we were talking about this policy last year. So we're very aware, and I will say that school administrators will do a lot of calibration along with, you know, our conduct coordinators in our Title IX as well, those, those offices, in terms of how far do we really want to go? And I, I think the reality is this, you set forth the expectation, I think, across the board from the very beginning, and if you have great relationships with kids, they'll understand. Like, I, I don't have any worry from that vantage point, but we'll correct, I think, as we move forward as well.
Sounds like it's also edging towards an MTSS discussion as well.
I just have one, like, quick thing to say. I'm like hearing concerns, and I'm understanding that we're, it sounds like we're kind of moving forward at this point, and there's an openness to revisit, and I just want to put forward my hope that as we go through, and last year, it's less than a year of uniform policy, right? Or not uniform policy, but policy across the board, we'll have this year, I really hope that the door will be open on taking a look at the, and, and really, this year, be thinking, like, make a list of the concerns you just heard, and think about coming back to us so that we can make policy changes, if it needs to be a policy level change at the board level. It might be that the advanced, it's very vague, so maybe the advanced directive covers it, and just, I would love if you would come back and give us an update on how things are going, and tell us how many kids were searched, were there racial disparities in discipline that were found, or socioeconomic issues? Just tracking those concerns that you're hearing tonight, so that we can just make sure that we're, like you said, using this as like a continuous improvement opportunity as we implement, and, you know, what are you hearing from other places that are having better luck, or whatever? I think that'd be really helpful.
Thank you.
That's my request.
I think that's a great idea, and maybe with an end goal of having, having it be uniform for the next year, like what's working where? Are, is there less discipline tied to particular methods, like with the yonder pouch or a caddy, and then, you know, maybe we can have a uniform policy?
Great. I, I definitely agree that we, that at least trying to hit a u, a uniform policy by next year would be great for, for the next year. I would like to, to raise, because we, you know, we start talking about yonder pouches and enforcement, and, you know, even though it's kind of a, it's sort of a moot point, because we cannot fund yonder pouches, I'm firmly, you know, against yonder pouches, because they work, but I don't think it's the yonder pouches that make them work. I think that, that the, the schools that have implemented yonder pouches always accompany them with strict, with, with harsh and consistent punitive action. I believe, I forget exactly what, what it was at Grant, but it was like every time you have your phone out, it's an immediate, I think it was like a stage-two referral, and, and that scared kids, kids, you know, I, because as a member of the DSC, we talked about this a lot, and there were tons of kids, you know, I, I heard from the Grant representatives, they said, I don't know any kid that's not a freshman that actually uses their yonder pouch. So like, there's a million ways around the system, but, you know, but the phone stays away because of the enforcement.
I can vouch for the exact opposite.
What?
Having had a freshman, yes.
Yeah.
That a lot of them do, do use them. But you're right, you know, there, the, the discipline was clear and communicated. You're exactly right. I think the difference was the ability to have your, your device in between classes. Now, I'm speculating, obviously. That was a big issue prior. So I think that's one of the great things about the yonder pouches, is it just, we have to remember the teachers are in the loop here, and if, if the, if the phones are out, they're policing it again, whether it's during passing periods, I just feel like that's why it works so well, it takes that burden off of the teachers.
Yeah, so what I would like to raise is that, and again, I'm against, you know, have students not having their phones during lunch and passing periods, but if that was what we wanted to do, I believe that, that as a district, without any money, we can achieve a yonder level, you know, response, by simply, you know, properly communicating and enforcing certain punitive actions, because that's what I believe has happened at schools that have implemented yonder pouches.
Thank you for both your input, that's very helpful. Director Chase Miller?
Yeah, I mean, I think it matters less whether kids are putting their phones in the pouch, I mean, obviously, that's our hope that they're doing that, but if the expectation is that everybody's phone is in the pouch, whether or not your phone is in the pouch, you can't have your phone out, and that is quickly determined. So whether it is the actual solution, or it just provides the deterrent, I see that as effective either way, yeah.
Or provides a clarity of expectation.
I used some peer pressure in high school. The cool kids, nobody carries their phone anymore.
Director Wong, I have one, I have one last quick thing. I know we're three weeks from school starting, and I will tell you that my phone, my kids have neither phones nor watches, and so the often-away policy did not directly affect me, not like Director Split, I had no idea that watches applied, it didn't matter to my family. However, I have idea that watches applied didn't matter to my family however I have seen watches throughout my kids' elementary school all spring semester and so I I guess I would implore you with three weeks before school starts to start rolling out because I learned today and I know all my kids' friends going into middle school don't know so let's start pushing this information out and uh put it on the governor's executive order and then.
I love the idea that Director DePass mentioned of having office hours for parents so just a chance for them to ask questions um either by school or by district I'm happy to host those if parents can you know ask general questions like what does this look like in elementary school middle school or high school.
Thank you um we are at time so I I kind of want to move it along of course we we have there's more urgency to discuss this we we have other avenues that we can move this to. Thank you both for answering our questions as you walk away and hopefully have a good evening or night um alright uh next up we are we have posted for review if you wish the draft work plan um that we started last month during the work session um the initial draft was revised now I just want to be very clear this is posted here for our information and to so we can see the kind of iteration um we don't have to discuss it we're not making any decisions on this today um the goal is also to hope to work on this as well during I think our retreat and we can decide when we want to make a decision on it so there's no pressure about this but it is posted in case um you would like to provide some feedback or discuss aspects of it tonight um again this is an iterative process uh nothing is finalized so um there's a couple of changes that include enrollment uh to the boundary priority item um and also academic excellence was moved as well and then you can see some of the changes as well so I will now open up the board if you would like to discuss and continue iterating this process um but again we are not making any decisions tonight on this.
Um this I uh saw that this was on the agenda I didn't super understand why because my understanding was we were next discussing it at the retreat um I would I know we could sit here and talk more about where we are in it but I know we're also gonna talk about it at the retreat um and so I would personally love just in the interest of time and also the fact for those who don't know I went to review because we only get four days now to review documents and on Sunday I was unable to review documents that so I couldn't even review till last night which didn't give me much time so um I'm just asking for grace on maybe saving a substantive discussion tonight when we're not making any decisions and just instead let's talk about it at the retreat um but the one thing I did want to put out there is I'm I'm hoping that we as a board can take this framework that's being put together by staff and like expound on it to make it an actual work plan to me it's more of a like to do list um and we need to take that and which things are going to which committee and which dates and by which do we want to do this and I'm I'm putting myself out there to volunteer since I don't have the added obligation of sharing a committee to help um make that happen maybe in partnership with staff um uh to to take that sort of to do list and turn it into um what I would describe as like a more thorough work plan with like committee assignments for which topics go where and all that kind of stuff and we can talk more about that idea but I did just want to like put it out there so people could marinate on it and we could discuss further um at the retreat.
Or like a work plan committee.
Um I had the exact same thought and I feel like there's a lot of committee work that has started to happen that I think could definitely if you were open to taking the lead on that I would love it like more like you know work plan with like key dates that we're working against and I think the committees are actually doing some of that work right now that we could you know bubble up to you and maybe that would be a great starting point you know combined with what we have here.
I didn't think we decided we're only getting four days to review documents I think we're talking about that.
I think we're to talk about it on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so it's not decided because that's not enough time.
Yeah, I just didn't the documents got shared on like Thursday or something I had to work I only had the weekend I had my kids and only had Sunday night to review and then Board Book was down um for my husband and me on all of our devices on Sunday night for like six hours so.
Yeah and I think just a little history on that so the original board protocols that were passed back in twenty twenty-two uh said four days but it was also based on the OSM Oregon School Board Association's recommendation where like they're how they envision um school board function in terms of like the big discussions happen during work sessions and so things are posted you know for that and then you have a chance to discuss it and finally by the time you get to a regular meeting you know things have already been discussed through and that's why um that original board protocol was adopted to fit that kind of work I don't know what you call it framework thank you repeated work um however there was a a couple of years ago before I came on the board there was another big retreat where a different kind of framework was presented and it put a lot of uh the the board that then worked on a new board protocol that put a lot of kind of um accountability both on the staff and the board however that board protocol was never adopted I think partly because it put a lot of accountability on the board um but some people forgot that it was never adopted and on that board protocol it did say twelve days and unfortunately it's not workable when you don't have the whole you know it's a framework so if you don't adopt the whole framework you know you can't make a car run when you don't have wheels so it's um yeah and so that that's why I think this is a very we are going to discuss this during our board retreat because it's a very important topic.
So in the interest of time I would make a motion to move this all post-board retreat.
Well, I think it's important to understand that yes we do need to talk about it at the retreat and we also need to know that there the context is important because to allow twelve days if you think about what the staff's doing so they're educating our kids and doing the work to get the administration you know the admin piece of the work done and they need more time than the the twelve days they're they're doing back to back if we ask one of us asks for a map or something some data that's not easily you know you need to send a staff to do it it kind of displaces the actual work that needs to go on so it needs to be whatever we come up with as a as a group needs to be workable for the people doing the work and for us so it might be like you know it might be a compromise um the twelve days was great because I'm a single parent and when I started here had one child um and and a full-time job and so you know I didn't have the husband maybe that was the part that was made it easier but I was able it was hard to balance everything and but I did it and and you can do it too but we do I agree we need a little bit of time it needs to work for both the district people doing the work and for us.
I just want to kind of refocus our conversation back on the um the board uh focus areas and super ten focus areas uh but I don't want to clarify Director Jangle saying were you talking about moving to postpone the discussion about the protocols or the work plan?
The work plan.
The work plan okay so after for after our retreat.
Yeah.
During our retreat.
Well, on this agenda I don't I I don't know that we need to spend more time on it today because we're working on it on the at the retreat and then maybe we put it on a future work session or board meeting agenda to tell you know but I don't think we need to do more today.
Got it I agree does anybody else feel like we need to do more on this today? Okay, love it alright.
Eddie, do you do you mind if I just say that I I do appreciate uh Director's call out about um it at this point um being a list I think that's what we were uh trying to convey is that what our hope is is that the board will wrap around this and be able to tease out the work and uh be able to look at like the flow of the committee meetings and insert actions and I I hope that when we're in retreat that we have enough time allocated for that because I think that's also helpful for us on the school side so that um these items that are in queue we can get the information because it shouldn't be and feel like you know you're getting information if we if there's a work plan that we all have and we know what's coming up and um what information you're expecting then I think it helps us uh get you what you need to so yeah I don't know how many minutes that is I just hope that there's enough.
Yes, thank you for putting that I love the way you put that um alright we're ready to move on to the consent agenda. Thank you Dr. Armshaw for closing it in such an elegant way um alright the board will now vote on the consent agenda uh board members if there's any items you would like to pull for a separate vote or uh please state that now.
I I don't want to pull one but I have a question and I think I forgot to send the question in I meant to and it would be for Jay um Bruno.
But while while he's coming up uh let's put this on the table.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yeah. I just I noticed on the consent agenda that there were at least two um contracts for nurses and a couple of others for medical care and I'm just wondering is there any reimbursement we get for that or does that all come out of the general fund?
So uh yes it's th- those um specific students will their IEP teams have determined that that's a level of need that is required for them to access their education and so consequently those students qualify for the high cost disability fund so before when we were talking about ADM that's the standard state school fund um way of funding in addition to that for students with disabilities um there's the high cost disability fund and um which is a fund that's limited um to fifty-five million across the state and so for any student that um program costs more than thirty thousand dollars the district can apply to get reimbursed for that um the issue is and we advocated this last legislative system to have that increased and they and it didn't happen but so the issue is is the the volume of students whose programs cost more than that um and the amount or the total cost of programs has grown so much that it it reimburses at a rate per uh less than forty percent so um so so the really short answer is yes we get reimbursement a very small amount.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to be um just for the record I think Director Split motion and Director Chase Miller seconded. Is there any other questions board discussion about the consent agenda?
Sorry um I had I know we're talking about it at the retreat but this is part of the um problem with having documents uploaded four days and then getting answers and questions I am now finally able to look at the answer to a question I had about seventy-one fifty-nine which was an architectural amount which was just a lot and so if I could just have a moment to read this.
Great, I'll I'll call another board members for questions while we wait.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question I can I can take up a little time.
Thank you.
Um a question um on some of these contracts where we have like little numbers um I'm just gonna use an example um let's see it was um the uh legal services contract um for the Office of General Counsel um and it looks like when we see like numbers like you know eleven is that like the eleventh renewal is it a renewal of a contract um I'm trying to kind of understand what those are. Like the number is PPS dash four six dash zero five two eight and then in parentheses it says fourteen.
What page are you looking at?
Um.
Not the cover sheet. I'm just looking at the.
Yeah.
At the contract.
Yes, exactly.
Resolution.
Okay.
Oh.
How often are those um put out for RFPs? Do we know? I was just curious.
These contracts?
Yeah.
Um I actually don't know.
So if it's an amendment it wouldn't have gone out to an RFP.
Okay.
Are you I I I don't I can't speak for all contracts are you asking about that one specifically or in general?
It was just an example no I wasn't like zeroing in on the legal contractor and like it's just an example.
Okay, no I just wanted to understand yeah.
Okay.
That generally those refers to amendments and.
Okay.
They don't if it's been an amendment it doesn't it hasn't necessarily gone out for an RFP.
Okay, got it.
And I but the original the original contract has though and we see anything over a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And it's all it's a hundred and fifty hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I was going to also point out that um we have a procurement website that I think is public facing uh that's public facing that talks about all the rules around contracting and I know we received a few quite a few questions last year I can imagine that there'll be a few questions this year and I I think I just want to just put in perspective and I know that you all are like of course we know that Kimberly um but uh when you look at our general expenses and our bond funds we are um close to a three billion dollar organization we have eight thousand employees I mean if you were to compare us to a a private entity we would be comparable to some pretty large size organizations and I know oftentimes we've uh as we should focus on what in the business world they'd probably say like our end users um which are our students and making sure that we're doing all the things that we can and it takes a lot of work to run this organization right so whether it's you know um making sure that our buses we have mechanics on the buses we have huge electric bills um there's other things that we're doing for like training and supplemental activities and materials and I just want to bring that forward and also I would love to know and maybe just to kind of put on your mind for the retreat conversation if there's any information that we can provide ahead of time that's helpful I know that this has been the standard cover sheet that shows the new contracts but I know I mean at least in the last thirteen months there's been a lot of questions and so it just makes me wonder if we're getting um all the information uh to you or you feel like you're informed about the way that funds are spent in Portland so just to kind of tag for later and then just put in put in perspective um just the the totality of our organization just a reminder I guess I would say.
And I would just also thank you for that um you're I hadn't ever thought of it comparing to an eight thousand plus the acreage that we own that's in our purview um I was gonna say public procurement is really it I've found it really challenging to understand it is governed by I think it's ORS two seventy-nine A B and C and there's it's very prescriptive you you know that you can do this and you can't do that and um we can pretty much guarantee anything that's gone out for an RFP or an RF uh request for information is it goes through a process that's I mean if you can get through the process good for you um so it's there's some checks and balances in place but in terms of the totality that like outside of the budget process um I wonder if we might have a presentation from procurement for people that are new to public procurement because it is its own strange animal it does you know.
Since we get to uh since it seems like it's good for us to make requests for things to be on the agenda in public we would like to request I would like to request that we have some sort of training opportunity on contracts in the near future so that we all are on the same page.
That is a good idea and something that I Patty and I didn't get um yeah I'll explore that in our leadership discussion I think that's a great idea thank you is any other discussion on the consent agenda?
Only to say that thank you um for the answers to my questions um just for transparency I had looked at the new contracts and the architectural amount seemed very high and so I just had questions about it and the answers that I got from PPS staff are just very complete and helpful and helped me understand so thank you.
Thank you alright the board will now vote on Resolution seven one five nine through seven one six one all in favor please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed abstentions student representative?
Yes.
Thank you the consent agenda is amended is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative voting unofficially voting yes. Thank you let's move on to our next item um alright uh this is wait hold on I think we're forgetting something. I just want to um because we passed this on the consent agenda I just want to um make a note so we don't forget but uh Resolution seven one six one we're approving board members to attend the OSBA OSBA uh conference this weekend um it is board policy and also best practices to kind of report to the board what you learned as so as to maximize the amount of dollars that we spend on professional development for our board members so just just be aware uh when you come back uh I will be asking for what you you know something that would help the rest of us to know and hear.
A brief report.
Yeah, if you want to just do. Yeah. If you want to just do Cliff Notes, is that even still a thing, and upload it to Board Books, that's great, too. All right. Last item on the agenda is if there's any items that you would like to request, or be considered for our next agenda setting meeting. Already have contracts?
Yeah, I also, I guess, made a request for one way down the line, to do an update on the cell phone policy. So maybe we could make a running list somewhere, because that won't be for quite some time. But that way, we don't lose tabs on things we've publicly promised to do. So I will just make the official request for like, a year from now, for that.
And on that note, Student Representative Bortor, I interrupted you when you were talking about Grant, and I just want to apologize for that. That was not my intent.
Did you? I didn't notice. I'm pretty sure I was done talking. If I had something else to say, trust me, you would have, you would have known.
I appreciate that.
Love it. All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Well, I've got two teenagers.